Okay, I'd like to call Committee of the Whole to order this evening. Noting that all members of the committee are present, as well as virtually every director of the City of Lakewood, member of the public, and council staff, of course. Want to begin with a presentation from Councilman Rader regarding the battery power solution over at Cove Community Center. And then I'll talk through some logistics from there, but want to make sure we get to this presentation first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that very much. And I'll go ahead and jump right into it. If you have questions, anybody, administration, council, feel free to stop me as we go. We can also talk about things on the end of this. There may be some concepts that are new to folks, so... But I'm not... You can't spend too much time, so if there are, you know, questions, please, you know, hold them or ask. So first off, my research, you know, we had originally come to this idea that Cove needed potentially... It does need some type of backup power. And that's something that was built into the original design of Cove. It's built to do that. There's this idea of resiliency hubs. We think that Cove is a great candidate to be a resiliency hub. We'll talk about what that means. Backup power can come in many different forms. Gas generators, one. Battery backup is another. They're not mutually exclusive either. You can do both if it's something you choose to do. Also, we had put in an original proposal for solar at the facility. But after talking to numbers of professionals, I think that this proposal and this chunk of money and this... Where we're at right now with Cove would be best served by doing a couple of different things, and we'll get to that towards the end of the presentation. But first, let's level set. And I want to also thank my colleagues, both Mr. Bullock and Council Vice President Keppel, for supporting this initial proposal and helping shape this along the way. So, thank you. So, what is a resiliency hub? I think we have to kind of start there. A resiliency hub is a place usually owned by a government. It can be a community-owned facility as well that is built to be either off-grid or have its own power source, or at least built in a way that it can sustain itself if there were some kind of catastrophic event, if there were some weather event, or some kind of event that would cause the whole entire region essentially to not have power. So, the best way and the ideal way to do that is to have some type of onsite generation, solar, wind being the sort of best options there. And having some type of battery backup is also very critical to having this hub. And then creating, you know, building the wires and the network it would take to support that, and potentially even connecting it to other facilities within the city. Could even be the neighborhood itself to create a more robust, what we call a microgrid, or a grid within a grid, right? But the first really basic component of that is a battery, some source of energy that you can store energy from the grid. You can generate energy on-site and store it for either sometime later in the day when energy's peaking. You can actually take that energy out of the battery, put it back into the facility, save some money and some demand charges. Or when the grid's down, you could actually have that backup generation. And you can build on top of it. So, you could start with the battery, build solar out, build your microgrid out from that point. So, some of these graphics and some of these ideas are provided by Rocky Mountain Institute, great organization that is doing a lot of like a leading-edge thinking around microgrids and sustainability and resiliency. So, there's some examples out there. The City of Baltimore actually has a number of these sites. There's actually five centers right now that have battery and backup, battery and solar. And there's four more slated for both battery and solar across the city. They're sort of the leading edge. Seattle also has a community center that's both solar and battery backed up solely, so there's no actual fossil fuel generators at these sites. These sites are purely powered by solar. The Columbus Zoo, actually, when I was down there last week, somebody handed me their sustainability plan. I was leafing through it, and I saw, "Oh, you're doing this. You have a battery backup." In fact, here it is, Columbus Zoo's microgrid. This is actually supporting a large portion of their zoo. And this is the Miller Community Center in Seattle. So, some of this equipment is not necessarily necessary for just a backup. The box that's up front here, there it is. This is actually the battery housing. Same thing over here, this is the battery housing. This is actually switch-gatherer types of electrical equipment that the microgrid needs. So, this is kind of the component we're looking to do at Cove. So, there's some examples. We're not too far... This isn't the future, right? This is happening around the country. It's something that we could certainly do. So, kind of bringing it down and kind of understanding what the need is here at Cove Community Center. We took the utility bill. We looked at it. Fortunately, on every utility bill, you have a year of usage. You can really look at what the center's using a year. We've been in Cove almost a year now, so this is getting pretty accurate. We're still a little bit... We need a little more data to make a full kind of assessment. Talk about that, too. But Cove uses about a quarter million of kilowatt-hours per year, which is a little bit high. Talking to professional, showing professionals, these develop solar developers, backup generator, backup battery developers. These bills, they thought it was kind of high, and they highly recommend some type of energy audit of the building at this stage. One of the things they pointed out was the fact that January's usage was much higher than some of the middle-of-the-year usage, when you'd expect kind of the most energy being used for facilities like this and cooling, yet for some reason, we're using the most energy in heating. There's a lot we still need to understand. Again, we'll get to kind of what the next step should be. But generally speaking, right now, we're looking at an average usage of about 570 kilowatt-hours per day. Again, it's pretty high, and the range is very wide from 200 to 800 kilowatt-hours. But that's basically what we need to replace in order to have some kind of sustainable backup. So, it brings us to kind of an idea, at least a framing of what kind of size backup system you're going to need. And it ranges, because again, I think we need to do some analysis and an energy audit and potentially more energy efficiency measures to get this honed in. But you need somewhere between 150 and 300 kilowatt-hours of backup to do something like a four-to-12-hour backup. Now, if you just do critical load, you pull out a sub-panel to just run your critical things you need, you could probably extend that to up to two days. You add solar, you can easily double that by pumping more energy in as it's going out, right? So, you're actually adding to the length of time you can be up. This energy would be dispatchable into peak demand, so these batteries are actually working throughout the day to replace energy that you're using. As a generator, we're just running when you need it. Batteries are actually running all the time. They can also... They're managed in a smart way to where if there's a storm coming, they'll withhold more of their energy, and they can actually be dispatched, and you can actually have a longer time up in the event of a big outage. So, there's a lot that they can do. They have the basic footprint. You know, I asked a lot of folks about like, how big would this be? How much room? How much space? It's going to be about the basic footprint of a 300-kilowatt-sized generator. It's very comparable. And I'm looking at price. EnRao, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, has this calculator. They kind of try to figure out where batteries are, what size, for what need. And we're at about $1,500 per megawatt-hour, or about $1.50 per kilowatt-hour, or $1.50 per watt-hour. So, that kind of gets a gross total for a cost of a battery like this, somewhere between $2.25 and $4.50. Now, we know for a fact that the cities are, as of this year, qualified for the investment tax credit as a direct payment. So, that would bring the net cost, that's 30%. You're basically saving 30% on this. It would bring the direct cost somewhere between $1.58 and $3.15 for a battery. Again, between 150 and 300. We have to figure out what that size is going to be later on. Just to give you a sense, I think Chad, you guys had talked about, you know, extending the parking lot perhaps, doing things like that, so I kind of gave you a sense. There's this strip, goes about 100 feet out to the property line there. It's about 25 feet wide. You think you could easily place a battery, even switchgear, even stuff for a microgrid, and still have plenty of room to do expansions of parking, or building a pool garage, or whatever you'd need to do. These are just my two cents. I'm sure you all have... I'm not the expert by any means, but I'm trying to kind of spitball, get us thinking in a direction here, and I think this would work. I do think that there may be have... There's obviously some fire guidelines for how many feet you have to have around a battery backup. Might be larger than a generator. So, you might have to have some buffer. It might have to be further away from the building than our generator. However, they're perfectly quiet, so they're not producing carbon emissions, and also not producing any noise. So, that's also a plus. They could be next to a playground, things like that, without having any worry. Some benefits, and this is actually a good picture here in the top right corner. It shows you like, the red line is the energy being pulled into the battery from the grid to charge it, and then it dispenses that energy at some point during the day, reducing your peak hours, and then basically saving you money. You're charged based on how much energy you use at your peaks during the day, and actually can, again, reduce costs there. At a minimum, it's going to be a 30% savings. It could be up to 50. You can layer IRA. For instance, if the installation's all American-made and everything meets different criteria, there could be extra additional benefits. But we know it's at a minimum 30%. You could pretty much bank on that moving forward. Energy management systems, increase the life of the battery, looking at least 10, 15, maybe even 20 years' usage out of the battery before it needs a major overhaul or sale for a new. So, depreciation is similar to that of a generator of this era. The potential... So, we're looking towards the future here, like we showed with the solar and the EV chargers, all this fun stuff, the great stuff that we really want to aim to do. The battery kind of provides that platform, right? And there's this, you know, folks at the county had talked to Mike Foley and some of their contractors about this as well. There's a potential to connect the Fire Station 3 to Cove Church City Hall in the future to do a kind of a triangular microgrid, where you'd put solar, put more solar on the mug back here would feed the battery at Cove. The battery at Cove would feed the Fire Station Number 3. This is a giant project over multiple years, but you start with a battery, right? You start with some kind of component that kind of lays that groundwork. And that's, you know, that's the future, and that's the future of sustainability, and it's creating... There's a good article about this, "Storage Enabling Microgrid Projects to Proliferate" in California. So, you have to start with this kernel, and then you can grow from there. There's all kinds of funding opportunities. I won't go through this because I'm probably getting long-winded here, but there's multiple funding opportunities. Want to thank Power Clean Future Ohio, if you're out there, for throwing a lot of these together for us to understand better. And hats off to Sean Eri, you probably know this slide already backwards and forwards. But, you know, I was delighted to hear that there's plenty of opportunities that I think they believe Lakewood is very well-positioned to help fund this project rolling forward. City of Cleveland's also considering this. I talked to Sarah at the County Sustainability Office last week. They're looking to do this at Michael's Zone and a couple other community centers. They're going to use their CDBG money to do that. They've got $380,000 to put towards it. I think they're probably going to start with a battery, because they did the research. They're kind of coming to the same conclusion. We start with a battery, we build up from there. And believe me, I want to do solar. I'm the solar guy. That would be the first... My first stop is to do solar, right? My first thing on my mind, let's throw solar on it. But actually doing the research, talking to professionals, starting with a battery backup seems to make the most sense. And it helps to get towards our climate action goals, too, because we're using less energy at the end of the day. Some partners. What came clear during the research, talking to a bunch of people, looking at Baltimore, looking at Seattle, looking at Columbus, there were just lists of dozens of partners that had to kind of pull their resources together to make this happen. These are just a couple people I've talked to through the course of the process, you know, just started talking to Cleveland. But there's also other cities around the country we could certainly tap who are way ahead on this stuff. Unpredictable Cities is one of the consultants that works for Power Clean Future Ohio. Command Consulting is working with the county microgrid system and helping build out their public utility there. Clean Fuels Ohio, they could be an excellent resource, too, for talking about how we integrate some of our clean fleet, clean vehicle infrastructure into these plans. So, some questions that I'd want the administration to think about if you're considering a generator, or just to think about in general, when you're thinking about multi-day outage scenarios, like what's the historic trend of that? How many multi-day outages have we had in that area? Maybe it's a lot, maybe it's not. Depends on where you are, depends on the stability of the grid in that neighborhood. You know, I would recommend looking very closely at emergency preparedness guidelines and protocols. You know, how many multi-day outages do we expect? And then also, under those different scenarios, look at diesel generators and gas generators. One of the individuals I talked to who does purchasing of generators and battery backups, you know, he's perfectly fine with us buying a diesel generator, but he says, you know, "Don't do natural gas, because if the infrastructure goes down..." And in northeast Ohio, there's no guarantee that the gas lines are going to be working, right? There's no guarantee those pumps are going to be pumping natural gas. This is why a lot of hospitals rely first and foremost on diesel generators. In fact, I think the generator here at City Hall, at least at one time, was diesel for that very reason. It's more, at the end of the day, reliable because you're controlling the energy in form of liquid diesel gasoline. However, if you install a liquid diesel gasoline generator, I think you really need to look at, you know, is it responsible to be installing a polluting power plant right in the middle of the densest neighborhood in the country? I don't think it is. I don't think that's what our plans call for. But just some thoughts, right? These are questions that are worth asking as we go forward, because it's a big decision, right? It's a lot of money, and that gets us to the steps. I think that it is appropriate, and it would be a good start, to dedicate $300,000 to starting this design process and paying for what would be most of the battery installation. Could even be potentially be all of the battery installation, looking at some of those numbers, depending on the size. And that takes us to the next point, like conducting that energy audit is absolutely essential. Figuring out hourly usage, and that's going to be critical. We don't get that looking at a utility bill. I don't know that. So, looking at our hourly usage, reducing consumption, looking at why so much energy spent in the warmer months. You know, if there's some resistive heat that's being used there that we don't know about, I don't know. Would be very behoove of us to do more energy audit in that space. Establishing needs. Get very specific about what we really need to do there, the functional and the technical. Evaluating historical uses like we talked about, looking at the outage data, and listing expert help. There's tons of consultants out there. I think it would be very wise to issue an RFQ to have a professional do what I did, but like, not just sort of fumbling along like I did. I think I got us to a good point, but I'd certainly not, I would not call this by any level professional. Seeking additional funding opportunities, we talked a little bit about what those might be. And then at the end of the day, developing a plan that takes us well beyond that battery, to solar, to EV chargers, to a microgrid, to community solar even, virtual power plants, our batteries that are spread out over a whole community that you're pulling on when you need them. So, you've got maybe, let's say, a neighborhood. We've got a neighborhood in Birdtown on the microgrid. Each of those homes has a battery. You're pulling on those homes. You put the batteries in, we install them in the city, we pull on them when we need them to keep the whole neighborhood up. So, that's all kinds of cool things you can do. I see this as a good viable first step. I think that's it for me. My colleagues, if there's any thoughts you have to add to this, you know, Mr. Chair, turn it back to you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Rader. Any quick questions on the presentation we just heard, first and foremost? Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first of all, I think it's an excellent presentation, so I think it is professional. It's a policy document and a vision document. It's not an engineering report, but that's okay. It's not intended to be. So, thank you, Councilman Rader, for a lot of work. I had a chance to see a draft version of this, but I didn't do the work, so I credit your good efforts. I support this. I applaud the vision. And maybe a key point is that we, I think, should be aligning our capital investment with our strategic plans, our community vision. We have a recommended and not quite yet finalized climate action plan, but we know that a climate action plan is going to call for reducing the intensity, the carbon intensity of our energy supply. In addition, and this would do that, if we were to fund a fossil fuel generator, what you'd be doing is you'd be locking the city into expensive fuel, the risk of fuel price inflation, as we've just seen during the last period of Ukraine war and COVID inflation, and emissions for the useful life of this asset, which is probably 20 years. So, we don't have the time to do that, nor should we lock ourselves into long-term capital decisions that are so directly out of alignment with our goals. In addition, the good news is that if you go back a couple of slides, Councilman Rader, one more? No, one more. Okay. There's a bunch of funding that's coming down today from the federal government to defray the cost. So, we could get this at a cheaper rate than traditional energy technology, maybe even to the point of, you know, less than, maybe even free, okay? So, the small-c conservative argument against trying innovation in operations would be, hey, we're not interested in taking on the risk of doing the new thing. But the good news is that if we get grant funding from the state or federal government, that essentially buys down that risk to the city. And I think that, you know, the character of our town is that our residents expect us to be smart and do the best practices across all kinds of things, and that's what we do with public safety, with health practices, with our paving of our roads, with a bunch of things. So, to me, we're ripe for doing best practices in our energy infrastructure. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice President Keppel.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Rader, for pulling this together. Did a lot of heavy lifting. When Director Barry and I first talked about this idea of the backup power for Cove, you know, I introduced, I supported the generator proposal just to get us talking on this conversation to make sure that we had the supports we need. One of the important points of ARPA is emergency preparedness, making sure that we can respond and be able to support those who most need support in critical times. And the Cove Community Center is certainly a place that supports those who need support the most at the right time and then the right way. So, I thought it was important to invest in that. And then, so, you know, given our short timeframe, I supported that idea and reached out to my colleagues who have more knowledge than I do on these sustainability solutions, sustainable solutions, and I'm very grateful for their support and work on this project. I think in addition to meeting the goals of providing support for those who most need it, when they most need it, and making sure that we can continue to have hot meals for seniors, support for families in a crisis, this also addresses, when we talk about our climate action plan, part of our climate action plan is going to be making sure that we're thinking about climate justice and looking at those who, that we're building sustainable solutions to support the most vulnerable communities. And again, this aligns with those goals. So, I'm proud to support this, and I hope that my colleagues will, too.
Thank you. Any further comment or question from my colleagues? No, that's okay. No, I appreciate it. Director Barry.
First, Mr. President, thank you. Thank you to everyone on council that worked on this. I think it's a great proposal. My primary concern with this, and it, you know, really, it's one major thing, and I'll leave the kind of technical aspects or concerns up to the folks that the expertise lies in. But when Cove is going to be utilized hopefully in the future as an emergency center, as a cooling and warming location, but also in any kind of natural disaster, any kind of other unforeseen event, certainly, we don't know the length of time that the grid might not be available. So, my real concern is to make sure that everyone has a safe and comfortable space to land when that happens. And I think part of doing that and part of making that a safe and comfortable space is making sure that all of our resources that we currently have, when the grid is available, up and running. So, Councilwoman Keppel, you mentioned our meals and everything else. I mean, that does require, I think, quite a bit of power generation to maintain, especially our refrigeration and freezers and all that good stuff. On top of that, I think we need to think, too, about accessibility of the building. And the elevator is a huge part of that. A lot of our services are kind of on that lower level. So, I know families are typically able to get up and down. I mean, that's what we've noticed, but there are certainly folks with disabilities in Lakewood that may or may not be able to utilize the stairs, no matter what age they might be. So, I just want to make sure that whatever solution we come to is going to be available for the whole duration of an emergency event. I don't know what it looks like, or what it has looked like in the past with some of our hurricanes and how long things have been down, but I do remember many conversations with Tony, running up and down buildings on the Gold Coast when the power was out a number of years ago. So, I just want to make sure that if we are that spot, because we have all those great resources in place and ready to go, that whatever service or thing we set up is going to be running and available, and we don't have an interruption in that emergency kind of scythe. Because that'd be terrible if they're there, and then all of a sudden, our batteries kick out, and then we have to transport them somewhere else, because now they're in an unsafe location. So, I think that's my primary thing. And I do just have a quick question. What is the lifespan of a battery backup? I don't know if that was in there.
Yeah. I had mentioned it briefly. It's not in the presentation itself, but anywhere from 10 to 20 years, depending on what the... It's a couple different types of technology you can use. There's a lot of options. That was where my head started spinning. But if I may address that directly, yeah, and I think great points. I think that's why I even underlined it, get specific. I think the more specifics we're able to lay out, you know, regardless the generation source, you're going to want to look at that, right? Because, believe it or not, a kitchen isn't really, it probably isn't your largest use unless you have all electric appliances. I don't think Cove does. It's pretty conventional. Not the hugest use. It's really your heating and cooling. And you want to understand like, what type of, you know, what you need at different hours of the day, how much exact energy does your elevator take when it kicks on? You know, even the amount and the phasing of the power at the center. There's a lot we don't know. That's why, you know, getting specific and understanding exactly what you're using on an hourly basis and what you would need, consulting guidelines that other communities have used in sizing any solution, I think, will be very beneficial. But I hear you loud and clear. I think it's really important that we have a very specific use case for a battery or a generator, or whatever it ends up being. Again, I'm advocating for a battery. I think the technology is there to do most of this, and maybe it'll take also calling some of these other folks out of the community centers, other resiliency hubs, to see what, how successful it's been, or how successful it hasn't been. I don't know. Maybe we should go in. So, welcome those questions. Very important, and I, you know, I think we're well on the way to starting to understand some of those answers.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comment or question from colleagues? Sorry. Councilman Marks, and then Councilman Bullock.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, could you tell me, what is the capacity of people that the Cove Community Center can hold?
Approximately, comfortably, I would say about 300 people. I don't know what the actual load is.
So, I know we've heard mention that the Cove Community Center can be used as a warming and cooling center for the community. Aren't schools typically used for that purpose?
Yes, I believe all the schools in Lakewood have power generation capability, and they are used in that capacity upon occasion. Garfield has been the primary site of any warming or cooling centers, and also any kind of emergency space. When the garage has collapsed at Marine Tower, that is where we hosted everything.
And their capacity is greater than Cove, isn't it?
I would imagine. I would imagine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would say just real quickly that the benefit of Cove, obviously, and I know you understand this, is that we have all the services in one spot. It is, we have noticed, is very difficult, I think, to provide a really high-quality kind of emergency intervention outside of our space, because we have to transport our whole team there. Our resources are located at Cove as well, like the physical resources. So, that's been one of my major concerns about really having that high-quality service.
But you would only be able to deliver that service to a smaller number of people anyway, right? 300 people?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So, Director Barry, and I should also thank Council Vice President Keppel for sponsoring the initial proposal. So, I'll repeat what I said at a previous meeting, which is yes to supporting the Cove Community Center to do what it needs to do, including a heating-cooling center, a resiliency center, and an emergency backup location. And the proposal to use a different technology is a proposal to make it successful, not to put in something that won't work. So, nobody wants a broken thing, right? Same with, you know, a vehicle or something. That's not what we're all about here. The good news is other cities have done it successfully and are doing it. And even in the conventional energy world, you know, the first energies of the world are installing giant batteries at their substations, not for backup, but for other stuff, to levelize the power current so it doesn't go down. levelize the power current, so it doesn't, it doesn't go down. So this is not science fiction. This is off-the-shelf technology. I also, it sounds, I mean, what Councilman Rader included in the presentation about an energy audit is exactly correct, because, for example, you'll need a lot more power if you have 300 people sheltering there, because people generate heat. So the building will perform differently. So I think it will be helpful to more clearly define in detail whatever the emergency backup scenarios are. And there's going to have to be some conservation, because even if you're using diesel fuel, diesel fuel runs out. If you're in an emergency, you can't guarantee that you're going to get a new replacement shipment. So you're going to have to have some emergency plan where you start to triage. You know, and the last little thing is, I mean, this is part of the climate action plan. Everybody thinks that we can just continue not being thoughtful about our energy use. So I'm going to add two solar panels in my home, I'm going to run 19 waffle irons and 48 hair dryers. It's not going to work. We're going to have to actually pay attention, and people have begun doing that with LED lights, which helps to lower your cost, and it pays itself off, right? So there's a similar version of that for our commercial buildings. These are commercial-scale buildings, City Hall and all the rest. And I know we've done some of that work over the years in city buildings, but it's going to be an ongoing task for the next 15 years or more, as we, you know, keep improving insulation, replacing blowers and, and fans with more cost-effective versions of that. And then what we'll see is that the same size of fuel, whether that's battery fuel, or natural gas fuel, or diesel fuel, will stretch further and get the job done further, and that lowers the cost to residents in terms of tax dollars and air emissions. So apologies, everybody. You've got me on my favorite hobby horse, which is kind of like your mother tells you, eat your vegetables. It's the right thing to do, and it works. So end of the vegetables lecture. Thanks.
Thank you. So, ish. Thank you, Councilman. So with that presentation, and thank you, Councilman Rader for providing that, and Director Barry and the administration for, for providing some additional color to that, I want to just procedurally get into how we want to address all the different items before us as a committee right now, and then make this item our first one to discuss from a budgetary standpoint, and, or an allocation standpoint, and go from there with additional questions. I'm sorry, Mayor George?
Thank you. Good, good discussion. Thank you for putting this together, Councilman. Just one question on what, I'm curious about what timeline we're looking at. And how long typically, I know this is your world, how long does the energy audit take?
Yeah, we put it to some of the contractors on this. I would think this process would probably mostly take part in 2024. I think if we started seeing, we can get the energy audit done in 2023, and installation and flipping the switch in the battery sometime in 2024. You know, not knowing exactly the size, where we need to source it from, because that really determine, you know, how much energy you need is going to shape the size and even type of battery you use. Some of that's, you know, in question as to what month in 2024, I don't know. But yeah.
Okay, so installation by end of 2024?
And, and just getting into the rationale behind that question, I assume we're just looking at ARPA guidelines and wanting to make sure the money's spent down and not having to worry about those sorts of things. And I appreciate that premise. I think this gets into an important clarification that I seek, perhaps from the administration, but my colleagues in general, on the number of different projects either proposed by council or the administration or outside entities. And, and that simply pertains to if a proposed project is not 100% funded by these ARPA slash reconciliation dollars, what that means for the project as a whole. Using Cove as an example, maybe not the perfect one, but certainly as an example, you know, a proposed 300,000 or so, you know, say it should be funded at 150, is it then the administration's prerogative to decide a conventional means that would cost 150, or, or going this route that would cost 300, or, or something in between? I guess I want to understand that. Maybe it's a case-by-case basis, but I just wanted to say that, because as we're looking at what we have to allocate as a council, you'd hate to allocate one thing and then realize part, a portion of it wouldn't be usable, because it's not enough to fund a project fully. Councilman Rader?
Since we're using this example, thank you, Mr. I think it's a great question. And I think it's a good time that we're doing this now, because we'll have plenty of time to look at next year's budget. I mean, we are the budgetary body. We decide a lot of the priorities of the city. We can certainly budget forward and work with the administration. Certainly if it's a shared goal as well of the administration and other planning, I think it's something we could continue to work together on to, to solve those, those issues. I mean, we have multiple projects that, that carry over into multiple years, and we're always able to figure out funding for the things that we care about, so.
Understood. All right. Well, thank you. So, so then, just procedurally, I wanted to note, we, we have a multitude of projects seeking funding, of course. Some larger ticket items that I would hope to tackle first and foremost, one that is, I think, both, both expensive, but also, you know, sort of a flashpoint within our community with multiple organizations vying for it, is the former Youth Services Building, and the fact that we have a tentative recommended awardee for that, for that space. My suggestion tonight would be to not tackle the funding for that, just since that, that awardee has not come before council yet fully. But I would also suggest that we allocate or table about $200,000 of our shared funds as a council towards that project, whatever form that may take. And then with that, council leadership have just, so we have something to start from, suggested some amounts of our shared council dollars to put towards certain projects, just so that we can have a starting point for a discussion. I think we'll let democracy take its course, of course, but I also wanted to just have us, give us a starting point, so that, so as not to, I guess, be too all over the place with our, with our discussion. So with that, I'd hope to table the Youth Services Building usage with $200,000 set aside for whatever form that may take, knowing that, you know, that's money for us to play with in the future, should it, should that go forward or otherwise. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have a procedural question for the administration, not, not related to any particular proposal here. So I understand that regular ARPA funds are tied to the guidelines and the timelines that, that we've all been educated on. I do have a question that with, with revenue replacement funds, and that's why I'm curious, administration, whether it's Director Rankett or Chief of Staff Story, can educate us on. My understanding with revenue replacement funds is they have different guidelines associated with them, because they're not, essentially, you're pulling the funds from city funds and not ARPA funds, because of the designation as revenue replacement. And I know that the county has done that, even on their audit forms and everything. They have designated a lot of their council priorities as revenue replacement, so therefore, for match purposes for other projects, they're not considered federal funds, they're considered local funds, because they're coming from revenue replacement. Not that we shouldn't be mindful of these timelines, even if it is revenue replacement, because we should get these funds out into the community, but is that the case here, or are these ARPA funds?
The, I understand the question. From our perspective, as we've gone through our projects, we've gone every time, like a batting lineup, we've gone and characterized, is it revenue replacement? Or I mean, is it, what line item do we report it at quarterly? That's how we've been going about this. As it relates to quarterly reporting, I'll defer to Peter as to where we stand, but when we discussed this over a year ago, the, the hope and goal was to try to use revenue replacement dollars for your needs as much as we could. Whether that encompasses 100%, 80%, 70%, is the devil's in the details with respect to what projects you guys choose. Because as we go down the list, for example, as it relates to Beck Center, we know 1,000% that falls into a reporting category, of which we could, we won't have to use revenue replacement dollars, because it fits nicely within a category. So I, I don't know if that answers your question directly from a dollar per dollar answer, but that's how we've been, at least, that's how I think we've been doing it.
So if I may chime in from there, I mean, from my perspective, so much of what's proposed before us, probably, if not definitely, fits within ARPA guidelines. That means that the amount of what's proposed that would have to go through a revenue replacement scenario is somewhat minimal, and thus not material to the discussion overall. Does that make sense? And correct me if I'm wrong, please, Finance Department, everyone involved.
I would add, I understand Councilman Baker's question, because he's saying, if you're saying there's rules about when you spend it, when does it go out? 2024 is the deadline, 2026 is when everything's got to be spent, right? 2024 is the obligation part of this. And the answer to the question, as it relates to how we've reported everything thus far, has been that we characterize it, if we can, within the, the appropriate line item, which is what you just stated, on, on every project we've done, infrastructure, you know, it falls under the infrastructure category. Beck Center falls under the arts category, things of that nature. So at the end of the day, to answer the Councilman Baker question, the, the, the answer is, where we stand right now, the dollars that you guys are playing with largely, I would say, can be revenue replacement, but the objective that we're trying to do is fit them into categories, because it's just an easier reporting manner, and that's how we go about it. Because to Councilman Litten's point, they do fall into a category. There are certain things here that do not, but those are minimal.
So we're, we're speaking both of usage and timelines. And I think your question is about usage, but it's also
It impacts timelines.
It's also the timeline. So if something's, if a project is utilizing revenue replacement, is there therefore no timeline for usage, is the ultimate question?
Understood. The, once it becomes, and Peter, you can speak to this too, once it becomes revenue replacement dollars, as the county, it's like a round robin of the money comes
And by the way, we don't know is a suitable answer, because all of this is so new.
Say that again? I'm sorry.
We don't know is a suitable answer, I think, in all of this, in terms of timeline, from my perspective anyway, because this is all so new.
Understood. And I would answer, I don't know, I've sat through many lectures from New York City all the way to Kiowa County, speaking to county leadership on this, as it relates to revenue replacement dollars that are designated as such through the ARPA reporting category, or however we call it that, the answer, I suppose the answer is that once it's in the general fund, it becomes general fund.
Fair enough. And so as we finalize this, we may need to decipher which items, even if ARPA qualifying would be, would be preferred to be by council to be revenue replacement because of timeline challenges?
And you're hurt, you're hitting on a point that I've had many discussions with many of you about. One of the hardest jobs, and it falls upon Peter, and I help with Keith and everybody, is the reporting requirements are stringent, quarterly basis, we got to make sure we have everything lined up. And of course, with what's going on in DC, even though it's just, at this point, whether it's political stunts or whatever, it's, it becomes incumbent upon us to understand exactly how we characterize each of these, and that's what we've been very diligent about. So when you guys are, you know, where does this fall? That to us is the ultimate exercise that we've been really focused on for years.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Chief of Staff Story mentioned, and from the email I sent previously about what is going on in DC, for those of you not aware, that Senator Rick Scott put forward an amendment that would clawback any unobligated state and local funded under ARPA. So we're still digging into what exactly that means, and that would need a 60 Senate vote to succeed, but it's obviously that certain individuals in DC have their eyes on these ARPA dollars. So it's probably in the best interest of Lakewood to make sure that our projects can be tackled, even if they are revenue replacement, make sure they're tackled in a timely manner.
Understood. Councilman Schachner, you have a comment?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, well, what another way of saying that is, not what the mayor just said, but before that, basically, for some of these projects, you're, we're using general funds or backfilling the general fund with revenue replacement. It's not like saying like, oh, this is a revenue replacement dollar that is going to this, it's saying we're using general fund dollars, and it's being backfilled or replaced with revenue replacement dollars, right?
I believe that's accurate. Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, because that was just, I think some concerns come about is whether or not some of these projects fit neatly into some of these complex requirements for ARPA dollars. And so there's less of a concern of whether this fits to the letter, if, at the end of it, if we're feeling not 100% of whether it fits, we could use general fund dollars. And it's not like, oh, we're taking money away from something else, we're using the revenue. There, those general fund dollars we're using are being replaced with revenue replacement dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, in terms of how the money eventually goes out to whoever it's awarded to, I'm assuming that there'll be some sort of professional services-type contract, but I'm, I'm wondering what those requirements are going to be on any organization that accepts this money in terms of reporting, especially if they're reporting, if they're claiming that this is, oh, we have lost revenue, that's why we need this, these type of dollars. And to actually make that, reach that burden of showing, of proving that, yes, they are, they actually did lose, or what sort of requirements have you guys been throwing about that are going to probably be in these agreements when we give the money, and what type of reporting that these organizations are going to have to give back to us?
Most of the sub, I'm sorry, through, through the chair, Councilman Schachner, most sub recipients don't have the owner's reporting requirements, and that's intentional, because they realize that a lot of these are mom-and-pop businesses, shops, 501(c)(3), is everything. So if you read the rules, and I just did that for one of the questions that came from a colleague, as it relates to a sub recipient receiving money, what is reporting, it's literally, they don't have to abide by the same quantity and volume that we do. I do look at it almost every time, though, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's, and I work with law, and I, and, you know, Ernie's learning this as quickly as he can, and we're, we're working on this together.
Right. And I was just thinking that on the back end of it, like, it's not necessarily the sub recipient's required to report, but we're required to report certain things that we would only know, or be able to report, because the sub recipient has that information that's telling us. So I was just thinking of what type of requirements, or what kind of burdens are we going to have to put on these sub recipients in order so we could get the information we need to make our reporting?
Understood.
And if it's not much, then that's fine.
Case by case, it is not much, is the answer I would give to you.
There's also a lot of aspects of this that I think are made easier by following ARPA guidelines, just because of the somewhat stringent rules placed on them for the recipients of a lot of these funds. But all that aside, I'd really like to be able to move forward with discussions on the individual projects.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Bullock?
Just a quick addition to this. So it's, this is, you framed up a very important, valuable question. And I have a, a comment that straddles where you were going, and also where, where we just covered. So there's more things on here that I certainly would like to support and fund, that we're going to have capacity for. So for example, the Madison Park Master Plan implementation, I mean, certainly, we should be fully funding that. We probably can't fund it all out of this, this round, although I've, I've contributed at least a little bit so far. So I think what I would support is that we're getting a start on many, even if not all of these priorities now. And then this conversation's going to have to continue over some time. Another example would be the, the one we talked about at length at the beginning of the meeting with the Cove potential resiliency backup power system. As, as it said on one of the slides, we're hoping actually to get new funds from all these other sources. We won't know that those are in hand until sometime in the future. So what do we do now, right? So maybe what we could do is a kind of a blended approach, where we commit a portion, but then we're going to have to continue the conversation over time, right?
Right. I, I agree. And I also acknowledge that, speaking as a lame duck, there's funds to be spent beyond my tenure that, that could go towards these projects as well, or certainly projects could be tabled for the time being, until next year, and, and those sorts of things.
Fair enough, and it may not all be. But the last thing I would say is, maybe an approach we could take as a council would be to say, you know, whenever we're done with this deliberation, we say, okay, here's what we want to support in the amount you know, whenever we're done with this deliberation, we say, okay, here's what we want to support in the amounts. And that starts a conversation that's going to have to really go through law and finance in the mayor's office to make sure that the funding mechanics, we just had a discussion about, can successfully support what council recommended. And then we'll have to reconvene on the backside of that and make changes if needed, right?
Perhaps so. Implementation is everything.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, so tabling line two of the spreadsheet before us, the former youth building for the time being, and hoping to also table about $200,000 of our shared ARPA funds for that purpose, acknowledging that there were two viable and worthy uses for that space and that we'd like to fund one of them to make sure that that space gets utilized. I'd like to move directly to the presentation we just heard and the concept of a solar or EV charging generator for Cove Community Center with an initial proposed allocation from our group funds of $105,000. And I should acknowledge that the total of those group funds shown is the totality of what remains of our funds to allocate from our group funds as a council, which is 600,000 total. Pardon? 600,000 total in this moment, 505,000. So with that, I'll simply say we have 105 sort of out there. Would any colleagues like to individually support this with their own funds as well? Councilman Raider, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll put my money where my mouth is. By the way, I want to acknowledge whoever did the coloring on this, to our campaign colors. Very, very, very well done. And they look good together.
Yes, I'm lame duck blue.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll certainly, you know, I'll, I guess I'll start the bidding app. I don't know. I'll open up, my opening salvo will be 95,000, leaving a total of 100 left if my colleagues would each who supported this consider potentially doing 50,000 apiece. If you had other math in mind, open to it, but I want to start there perhaps.
Vice President Keppel, and you can type in what people say, or we can as we.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to be.
Knowing that we'll be a little behind the discussion because we talk quickly sometimes.
Right. Yeah, so I did color code this sheet because I'm an nerd like that. And it does live change. So as we fill this in, it should, if you, just a little navigation here on this, on the right-hand side where the total amount of the project is, and then it will automatically update whether it's fully funded or not. And if so, it's crossed out like these down here. If they're crossed out, it doesn't mean that that's not happening anymore. It just means we don't have to worry about it tonight, for instance.
Right, and noting that Beck Center is accounted for in this as well?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
But, so to the point about Cove, part of the idea of putting the 105 in there is that I think it, I was sort of expecting that Councilman Raider and Bullock and I might split the remaining cost there if we're amenable to that. I'm certainly willing to put in a share for that.
Yep.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, me as well. If it's okay to do the 50,000, I'd like to do that since I've already got a number of other things. But happy to take that approach, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Baker.
Are we able to re-return to these after we see what happens later in the spreadsheet?
Yes, I think, of course. Just needing to put pencil to paper, so to speak, and doing it in a, in a public forum is inevitably cumbersome.
Because I like this project.
We need to put things out here and see where that takes us and sort of go from there.
Oh, thanks. I was like, why is that not working?
By the way, kudos to Vice President Keppel, as well as our council staff, of course, but Vice President Keppel for being willing to run point on all of this.
Okay, does that work out? We good? All right. No, that's fine. It's fine. Yep.
Are we that swiftly through with Cove?
That was easy.
That was miraculous. And then the total amount allocated per member, does that need to change at the bottom? Or will it, or should I worry about that at all? Okay. And the 505 group funds as well? Well, I guess it's already allocated because it's already typed in. Right, so. You know what I mean? You already had it in there? The amounts, so. Okay. With that, we'll move on to Lakewood Alive and their Housing Outreach Program with a proposed project total of $115,000 and 100 proposed from our group funds. Again, open to suggestions, both on the group funds and then any individual council members who would like to contribute.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah, I have a question, and this is kind of what I was getting at to the timing aspect. And I suppose that because, I assume that these funds will be pretty fungible, you know, if they hit Lakewood Alive. But I'm wondering, you know, their proposal for the Youth Services Center, and I know we're sticking a pin in that. But I think an idea of them being able to find a forever home and us being able to put a down payment towards that, that's why the timelines were important to me and how flexible we could be with Lakewood Alive to try to spend that money. So that's where I'm curious, you know, there, I guess if you add Lakewood Alive and LCSCs, you know, chunk them together, it was like 450. And that's what I'm, I'm curious if like we funded them at $115,000 for housing outreach. How are we? I'm curious, the administration and Law Department has thoughts on like how, are we just going to give them $115,000 and say like, use this for housing outreach? Are we going to require reports from them? Could they just turn it and use it for a down payment on a new building that they would move into? So I'm just curious about those.
So my initial blush answer to your, your last question is no. If we give it for a purpose, it's for that purpose. Now, we could designate the funds differently than that and say, well, we might say as a council, we want to allocate $115,000, for instance, and that is for whatever you would choose. But if we're going to say here, now that it's for housing outreach, it ought to be used for housing outreach. So I don't know that that gets us anywhere, but I'm amenable to the idea, or the discussion anyway, on a forever home for Lakewood Alive and thus perhaps discussing if that's a priority for Lakewood Alive above and beyond the housing outreach work that they do. Yeah. Vice President Keppel.
Thank you. I just want to clarify on this number. The reason it's 100 instead of 115 in this number is that 15,000 of that proposal was for building out the garage. And since we're tabling the discussion of the building part, that's why that 15,000 was removed in this proposed amount here of 100,000. And then also, as we, it's a little complicated because we are, until we have the official recommendation and we take that vote and talk, have that full conversation about that recommendation, we're sort of pinning that. But, so I would be thinking about this, my way of thinking about this was it was specifically for the Housing Outreach Program, the $50,000 for Stay in the Van and everything else that was listed in that application. So, you know, we're addressing that need now and would be happy to, personally, I'd be happy to talk about, without going into whether or not, which awardee is getting the youth building. But should it not be Lakewood Alive, I would be happy to discuss in the money that we've set aside for next year or when we choose to address it, some money for Lakewood Alive for home.
We might also consider setting aside 100,000 for Lakewood Alive general use, whether it's for a forever home or for housing outreach, knowing that we have funds next year, knowing that they need a space, knowing that their housing outreach work is important, et cetera. Just making sure that we don't shortchange, for lack of a better term, a good program in our city because we don't know what the ultimate answer will be. So if we're tabling the youth building, we could table the amount allocated here and move on from there with our discussions if my colleagues are amenable to that.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
Thanks. The, so I want to support Lakewood Alive in a number of different ways. The, you know, this is a worthy amount. Now, I do think, you know, maybe we could take a combined or an iterative approach where we say, okay, you know, the city council is willing to commit a certain amount to Lakewood Alive. We should have a conversation with them before it's entirely final because I think their applications were written in a certain way. And if the answer comes back that the amount of funding is different or smaller, then they may make, that they might want to prioritize this or that purpose. You know, their triage order may be different than what we're contemplating here tonight. So I'd just like the ability to do some consultation. I think there's no problem with the notion of committing resources there. But for example, I'm wondering, you know, I would love to talk to Lakewood Alive further. Maybe the vehicle could be a form of donation they could find from a different donor. And an allocation of dollars is not always as easy to get. And so if the city were to commit some dollars, maybe they would want to use the dollars for some purpose. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I think that's, it's what I'm suggesting, I think, said another way in that we're committing some funds tentatively to Lakewood Alive and not acknowledging what that purpose would be while we are acknowledging that they have multiple causes that they've proposed to us. And most or all of them are worthy of our funding. But not wanting to miss them in this discussion, wanting to set aside, much like we are for the youth building, $100,000 tonight. Again, it could go anywhere ultimately, but just to make sure we do that out of, out of respect, I think, for the timetable of where we're at as well as the organization that we're discussing. Okay. Chief Story.
I have a question, just so I understand. Is the Beck Center already accounted, like taken off from the top?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious.
So, so when you see at the bottom, the total amount allocated per member, if I'm not mistaken, and that being 505 instead of 600, that accounts for the Beck Center? A good question. And the mayor already asked it, actually. Indirectly, indirectly, indirectly. Very good, okay. Any other discussion on Lakewood Alive? Vice President Keppel.
Thank you, and sorry, it's just, we were just about to close this off, but I just wanted to mention part of the reason that these are allocated in this way is also thinking about sort of finite proposals that are ready to go and laid out. And I would just, we can approach it the way we've just been talking about, just set this money aside, but also that that proposal did have specific amounts. And that is to the point about the, removing the 15,000 for the garage build out. Everything else in there was laid out to this amount. So, I mean, I'd be comfortable just going ahead and doing this, but if we want to wait and have that conversation, that's fine too. And then the same thing with the Legal Aid Society and those. So these are things that affect, you know, all of Lakewood and are kind of finite, clear proposals that are sort of ready to go, so.
Fair enough. With that, we'll move on to the Legal Aid Society's proposal. And again, council leadership decided initial group funding of $100,000 towards that $150,000 proposal from Legal Aid Society. Colleagues, any discussion either on the group piece or your individual contributions to said project? I'll commit to an additional 25,000 from my funds.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to commit to it, but I'd like the chance to come back to it.
Okay, all right. Keep whittling away.
I'll know more next one.
Sure.
For expediency, I'll commit to 25 to match. I think that gets you to the 150.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Exactly. The Excel guru that is Vice President Keppel. Okay, well, that's that on Legal Aid. Any other comments or questions? Very good, thanks, thanks, folks. Enhanced traffic calming. This is a $150,000 ask, as we've already discussed, touching upon our existing traffic calming plan for the city and really accelerating it, while also, I think, acknowledging that we don't want to buy a whole bunch of things in one year, but to step through into it so that we don't have everything expiring all at the same time either. This is a $150,000 project for which I am proposing personally 50,000 from my funds.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Baker.
I'd be willing to throw in 50,000 as well.
And I should add that this is a project not just working on traffic calming in wards one and three. Any further interest or discussion?
Mr. Chair, could I reserve the right to circle back around to this in the future?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, we could, yeah, if we're rifling through it as quickly as we are, we might be able to kind of breeze through everything and then breeze through again if that means that we are being as thorough as possible. And again, this is sausage baking at its finest. Any further comment on this one? Okay, we'll move on to Studio West 117. A rather substantial ask, I'll acknowledge. I know that there was some discussion from Studio West 117 about needing some city funds or hoping for some city funds towards their project as a means to leverage county funds, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if that was a requirement or not. And if the administration remembers otherwise, or my colleagues, please let me know. I don't know that they were necessarily contingent upon city funds, but that they were, from a skin in the game perspective, hoping for some funding from the city of Lakewood as well. Comments or offerings from my colleagues or from? Councilman Marx.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with Dale Miller today, and he did say that he felt that the county would be more than amenable to be contributing to this if he saw some ARPA funds contributed from council. So he felt pretty strongly about that. He didn't say how much, but of course, it's up to us to decide. I think some showing for this project. And he said that, you know, it is the only project in Lakewood that's moving forward with a purpose. And the developers are putting some of their own funds in the game. So he feels very positive about its contribution to the community and to the county in general.
Understood.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah, and this is perhaps a question for the administration and another one where I was hitting on the timeline issue. As Councilman Marx said, you know, impressive what this group has done with the field house. You know, they're moving south. If this project, you know, comes to fruition in all the various phases, what a tremendous victory for all of Lakewood and for the region candidly, particularly with the mission and what they're doing. Early money is the riskiest money, though. That's where I've been wrestling internally with myself on kind of ways in which we may be able to protect the city's investment. And so, for example, the county, they've matched Brownfield Redevelopment Funds, which I believe the NTB site got some of. And what they did essentially was, it was a forgivable loan that if the remediation is done and you go through all the required state requirements to get the covenant not to sue, the loan was forgiven. to sue, the loan was forgiven. And that's where I'm wondering, and perhaps this is a discussion for the administration, is to protect the investment on the early money, is there a way to think about this as a forgivable loan that is forgiven once they pull building permits or something, right? So, because design money is scary money.
Sure, and I mean, I'll defer to the administration on an opinion there, though I will note that there are RFP, Cleveland-based RFPs using ARPA funding that hope to create revolving loan funds through their usage and not just as grants. Though I don't know if there's a rule-based or red tape-based issue with doing so in Lakewood.
Well, and I, so my idea would be is that if these are revenue replacement funds, then they essentially be a general fund loan to the project. Furthermore, if the project isn't completed, if they don't pull building permits and build it, the city would then have a mortgage for that amount, which would mean the city could control the future use of that site and development with some strings attached so that the city can make sure that what was going to be built there was what the city wanted. So I'm just saying it gives us control. I'm just talking about it on the floor to see if people would find that.
Acknowledging that all these discussions are sort of on the fly, I'd be curious if the administration has a comment. I am looking at Director Leininger at the moment.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as far as protecting our ARPA funds, our ARPA investment, anytime that we put money into a development project, economic development project, there's usually some type of string attached to it, whether that's performance-based, with some call back based on that performance. To Councilman Baker's standpoint, or point, it could certainly also be a forgivable loan that's tied to a lien that's put on the property, that we could always call back if the project were to be entered into design phase, but they never actually come to fruition, based on a predetermined time. We actually have a similar language in their development agreement today, that there's triggers in there that would cause it to expire. So there's definitely ways to do that. I would recommend anytime we invest into a development project, there's some type of string attached to it. So whether that's performance-based or just time-based.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that backing. I also want to encourage a continuous forward progress on a usage of our funding and this conversation. So with that, Councilman Bullock, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I want to join Councilman Marks in expressing support for the Studio West 117th phase of the project. It's ambitious, they've delivered on the early stages. It would be transformative for western Lakewood and even that whole district which straddles, you know, our neighbor Cleveland. So what a wonderful project. Now, I welcome the dialogue that we've just been having. I don't consider myself enough of a development practitioner to know what the right amount is and what the funding source ought to be. I'm certainly open to committing some ARPA funds to support this. And I also hear the wisdom of what was just said. So I would really, I guess, like to say for the record, I'd like to signal confidence in the project and support it in some way, but have a continued conversation beyond today for an exploration of what tool, what financial tool is the best, the best use, you know? And I kind of look to my colleagues and the expertise of the administration to kind of work through that. I also know we have committed a fair amount to the earlier phases of the project. I expect that this application by the developers is not the sum total of the assistance that might be sought. So I think there's a thoughtful conversation about the near term and the big picture that I would benefit from, you know? So I hope that's kind of.
Sure. Again, in the interest of continuous forward progress, I'll suggest that 25,000 of my funds be added to this project in the hopes that it might spark others, at the very least, and thus move us forward in our discussions. Councilman Rader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick comment, maybe question, I don't know the answers here tonight, but so this was actually two sets of $250,000 amounts. One was for fantasy redevelopment, and then was for the NTP site. I mean, I could see myself being very much behind the NTP development, affordable housing. That, to me, is sort of central to what ARPA is all about, getting us back on our feet, making sure that people have housing if there's a crisis in the future. Developing the fantasy, I just have a harder time understanding, important, definitely within the realm of economic development, but if I were to support it or if I were to sign on to it, I'd want to make sure that that money is, if it were under the, around or up to the 250,000 we were talking about, that it would be directed towards somehow the affordable housing aspects of the NTP lot.
Sure, and I should actually color my allocation a little bit better. This is one of the few projects listed here that is economic development at its core. Most of the rest are either a universal public good to the city of Lakewood or for people in need, and this is really the only project speaking to economic development directly, even though it is very much focused on an underserved community in our region. And so with that, it's easy for me to allocate at least that and have that discussion moving forward. I don't think we should be bashful about economic development and funding it in our city, should it not be for the least among us.
Mr. President.
Councilman Marks.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to contribute 25,000 to that fund as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I may come back later.
Same. We all reserve the right. About's time you started spending some Monday money, Marks. Just saw your balance. Trying to get us somewhere. All right. Any further comments or questions on Studio West 117th? Vice President Koppel.
Yeah, so I would definitely be interested to Councilman Baker's point. I think some further discussion I'd like to see, I certainly want to support this project. I think it's been already, what's already gone on so far has been incredible. We have already, you know, been supportive of the project through the TIF, and so I just want to make sure that we are protecting any investment that we give, but also want to set them up for success with the county investment. So I'd like to have some more conversations about how this money would be protected before committing.
Understood. Any further comment or questions?
I mean, to that point, I would, and I'm actually having coffee with Director Vargo later this week, but the county has great forms for the brownfield program that their Department of Development has used to disperse those funds with a mortgage and a promissory note and all that kind of stuff. Why recreate the wheel when someone else already did the work and changed the names? So I'll connect offline with Director Vargo on that.
Great, and I might suggest that the 25 I've allocated, I don't want to speak for Councilman Marks, but that they, that it would be tied to some metric-based, performance-based, something in order to make it a forgivable loan rather than simply a grant.
And just to clarify, we have those documents as well. We have our own promissory notes that we utilize for our programs.
Very good. Any further comment on Studio West 117th? Hearing none and dinner not being here yet, let's move on to the Madison Park master plan. We have priorities here. Is there, I suppose, any comment from the administration? And I know we're moving forward somewhat.
I have nothing more to add than what we've already had the opportunity to provide.
Okay, very good. Colleagues, any comments on potential funding for the master plan there at Madison Park? You're all going to just wait as long as you possibly can?
It helps because Parmally's here and he's in support of it.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you. Director Leiniger, could you tell me, you have a grant from the county, correct, for the Madison Park master plan?
To complete the master plan process, yes.
And how much is the grant for?
It's a total of, the grant was for $75,000. The total project is $85,000. The city was contributing $10,000 towards that.
And you're looking for another $100,000?
For implementation, yes.
Okay.
So this was after the plan is done. Now we have a pot of money where we can just now jump into implementation of projects. That's what we were looking for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Those projects to be determined by the master plan.
And we don't know that yet, though.
We don't know that yet. We won't know until probably towards the end of the year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you. So I have committed a certain amount that I'm going to need help to sort out in a second. I would also say, Director, though, that if, even if the amount of ARPA dollars is zero, we will be, I mean, I would support allocating from our regular capital budget funds for this purpose. I mean, it's.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
It was trying to, there's a lot of pressure on the capital needs every year, and so we're trying to help offset some of that pressure.
Okay. So the portion I've committed already, and I'm actually having trouble recalling if it was 25 for, it was 25, you got it? Okay, so 25 minus the actual amount needed for not constructing a new structure, but just some tables and a cart to move tables from presumably a central location that already exists at Madison Park. So 25 minus whatever that price tag is would go to this purpose, which is number seven, line number seven. I'm guessing it wouldn't cost more than $5,000 or $6,000 for some tables and other equipment and some push carts.
Tables aren't very expensive. The push cart won't be very expensive.
So it may well be 20,000 from my allocation to this purpose, and then like 5,000 to the MC3 equipment because we're contemplating that storage is a zero-cost item, correct? Okay, so that's our kind of informal verbal agreement. There you go, except you put it, that's very generous of you, Council. That's all I had to say. Correct. Yeah, I think so, but you know, with the spirit of the agreement being that if the little more than 5,000 is needed for the equipment to support what I'll call the community entrance, the pedestrian front entrance to Madison Park, we allocate it, but if it's less expensive, then free it up for other purposes. Thanks.
Councilman Marks.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to commit 25,000 to Madison Park.
I'll contribute another 10 and withhold the right to offer more later. Anything further right now on Madison Park?
I'll put in 10 also and maybe come back to it.
All right. Again, kudos to Vice President Koppel for putting this all together so cleanly and understandably Anything further on, anything further on Madison Park's plan and funding for that going forward? Okay. Downtown parking, solar canopy, and electric vehicle charging.
I'm withdrawing that so we can.
Okay.
Formally moved or withdraw my proposal.
Hiding rows. We're not deleting them, we're just hiding them. Expanded public Wi-Fi.
I think I'm going to table this for now, Mr. Chair, with your permission. Sorry, I started speaking without actually getting your permission.
You're fine.
So we are gathering some more data about the cost. There are some of the locations where we'd like to expand the police cameras, that would include fiber, and so those projects are kind of interconnected. So Director Colette and I are kind of continuing that conversation. So I'm going to table this for right now and with the prerogative to come back to it once we have some more data.
Fair enough. Again, there's funding to be had next year as well on this important topic. So I appreciate the practical approach to this. ODOT property acquisitions, and I'm looking at Councilman Baker, Ward one's finest.
By way of update, excitingly, we had a call with ODOT, and it's implementable. So there's some nuances that I won't bore you with about director's deed for fair market value versus director's deed for public purpose. But the idea has changed a little bit where we will not be paying, we will likely not be paying fair market value for the property, but we will dedicate it to a public purpose, which is okay with ODOT, in which case we still will have significant survey, environmental, kind of like due diligence costs on the upside of the acquisition of the property. And then I would propose that basically whatever's left over be put into improvements to those properties as opposed to going towards fair market value. So I still stand behind the $120,000 budget, but it's exciting. I will do what I have to do to fund it, but I would be open to colleagues to help fund it.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Rader.
Gladly dedicate 25, and again, as everyone else reserves the right to come around, but start 25.
Vice President Koppel.
I just have a question. Does that include Niagara Park property?
And we also came to a conclusion on the call. It was helpful, we had chief legal of ODOT from down in Columbus and then the district folks up here, and they said that if we need to, prior to doing all the survey work, getting into like a lease agreement for Niagara Park so that we have more of a, like, interest immediately, that they'd be open to that. So it does include Niagara Park.
Vice President Koppel.
So with that, it kind of goes back to my Wi-Fi proposal. To me, that was kind of connected because Niagara is one of the areas where we're looking at potentially expanding Wi-Fi for both the park and so that we would have security cameras there. So I'd like to support this, but also I want to make sure, I'm going to reserve a little bit to potentially make sure we can extend fiber there to provide those services. So I got to think for a minute how that's going to look, but I want to support this as well as making sure we get that fiber.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
I'll commit 20,000. Thanks.
Anything further?
Necessary to get it all the way there.
I'll commit 10 as well as Vice President Koppel. It would appear. Yes, spreadsheet.
Thank you, colleagues. My children, thank you.
That's our first, our third yes of these, third yes of the evening, yes, and fully funded. Okay. So I think that means I can move on. Okay, great. Looking to Clerk Bach on if we're good on, I think we're still wrestling in the back there? We'll do one more. There's always time for pickleball, anyway. Pickleball court conversion at a total price tag of $50,000 or at least requested $50,000. All right. This is one I think I want to reserve the right to come back to. Any other allocations for my colleagues? While that's happening, you know, whenever I have a meeting for work, I acknowledge the cost it is for every person to be in the room, kind of in my head, as far as how important a meeting is and things like that. I acknowledge that we have every director of the city here, and I really, really appreciate it. It's one of those things where I'd hate for you not to be here if we had an important discussion to be had, but I just want to note my appreciation that you're all here for this discussion because I know it's not easy. I know you have other things you could be doing on a Monday night, truly.
And there's free food in it for them?
There is, there is Aladdin's in it for them. Any further comment on pickleball, colleagues?
I'll contribute 7,500.
I'll put in, I'll match.
I'll contribute $7,500.
I'll put in, I'll match. Redondo.
All right. Once Councilman Schachner spends his last $5,000, does he get to leave? That's what I really want to know. Don't say the quiet part out loud. Any, anything further on pickleball? Okay. Chamber of Commerce Economic Relief Fund. I want to be reminded on, on what funds have already been made available through the city, either via the Chamber or otherwise.
So, we are currently in discussions with the Chamber about starting a small business educational training workshop, or training series, I should say, that'll take place, I forget what the exact numbers are, five to seven workshops each year over the next five years. We're looking at the total value of those workshops over that five-year span, it'll be about $75,000. That's the only, other than the member, well, I don't know if we pay membership dues, the membership dues that we pay, that's, that's the only contribution that the city has to, to the Chamber versus to someone like Lakewood Alive where we have our $155,000 contract plus CDBG funds that also get allocated to Lakewood Alive.
And do you remember what the 86 and change is based around?
I believe it was, they went through and like lost revenue from membership and events, I think that was...
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, that recollection.
It, it was a very, like, very specific, actually had gone through about like this exact number.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the intentionality, at the very least. Any allocations my colleagues would like to make to this, to this cause? I'm sure they would take whatever we could allocate. I think we're going to table this one. Okay. Child care assistance, requested $10,000. Councilman Schachner.
I'll put in $5,000.
You're free to go.
I'll round it out unless anyone else wants to join.
And that is fully funded. All right. Holiday lighting expansion, and do we have any further clarification on the project itself? Because I remember there was some question, consternation as to the funding and the usage.
So, so I can give a preliminary, Mr. Chair. I had committed before, I believe it was $20,000. However, I know that Councilwoman Marks has a planning component of this, and you'll afford her, but I also know that Director Gordon's might have a, he's been doing research that might more, answer your question in more detail.
Councilman Marks and then Director Gordon.
I think we were waiting for Director Gordon to give us some information about the poles and the snowflakes, correct? Did you get all that information together, and is it done?
Yes, I did. I submitted everything, well, good evening, everyone. I submitted everything to the Illuminating Company. We're just waiting to hear back from their engineers after they review over all of our submittals. Just so everybody on council is aware, this would pay for what is known as owl installations on all of the utility poles that we did steam, available to put snowflakes on. So, it would pay for the install and then for the purchase of 10 additional snowflakes because we would be using the remaining snowflakes we have now to hang up. And that would, that would pay for that cost. We are waiting to hear back from the Illuminating Company on what the total cost for the installation would be, because the Illuminating Company has to perform the install. And then on top of that, we're waiting to hear back on how we would go about billing for the usage of the snowflakes. So, there's still discussions with that, and I'm waiting to hear back from the Illumi, excuse me, the Illuminating Company on, on all of those aspects. I don't think I missed anything, did I?
So, I would defer to he who initially proposed it on if the, the dollar figure is what we're targeting.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I'm happy to commit $20,000, as I said before, and maybe even circling back, I don't know if we're going to know in, in the near future on the exact amount or not, but first of all, appreciate Mayor George working on this together with council and Director Gordon for all the due diligence. To be clear, the $20,000 that I envisioned was for the downtown Detroit Avenue District in partnership with the Downtown Lakewood Business Alliance, who is also committing, you know, they've, they've put it in an email communication verbally at the meeting, a certain amount of funds that they have to, to partially match this investment. The mayor's vision for that might be that that would pay for the operating costs of the, of the power draw and usage. I know that Councilwoman Marks has a vision, which I also support, which would be to then do a design plan citywide so that over time we'd be doing more than just this initial starting point. I don't know if you have an amount in mind for that design work.
No, and I, so I think that we really probably should table this until we have those figures more accurately from Director Gordon, and I believe those snowflakes are all for the downtown development, aren't they?
So, the, the, yes, the, well, yes and no. So, the, the amount that Councilman Bullock is proposing would, would pay for the install of all of the 20 snowflakes that we are planning to put up, and that is 10 in the, in the downtown business district and then 10 outside of that area.
Do you know the areas that would be outside of that area?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell us what those are?
It would be, after you're going through the downtown business district, you would be heading west.
Okay.
So, there would be 10 more heading west on poles that we identified would be suitable to hang the snowflakes from under the circumstances that we had talked about before. So, as was said, this would pay for the 10 in the, in the downtown business district and then 10 additional ones going down Detroit.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I, I want to note that there was a statement about possibly tabling this, but also a statement from Councilman Bullock about allocating $20,000 to it. Is that to say that we would table it, but also allocate $20,000 from Councilman Bullock?
I think yes.
Okay.
In other words, the portion that Cindy's interested in would need more communication after this, but I'm happy to commit the 20 as a starting point.
Okay. And for my own clarification, this is a one-year's worth of installation piece, or is this a...
Correct. We feel we would be able to put those up in one year.
Okay. And that they would be up for, you know, the usable life, which is...
Correct.
Five to something.
So, it would just determine when the Illuminating Company could get out to perform the install. They have some very interesting timeframes.
Of course.
I'll just say it like that.
But, but the installation is, the, the cost here is not about one-year's installation, and we get lights for a year, and then we have to do it all over again.
No.
It's putting them up, they're up.
So, the original amount of $25,000 that was discussed, it was roughly anywhere from $750 to $1,000 per install. So, we are going on the higher side. That's why we came up with $20,000. And then the remaining $5,000 was to cover for 10 additional snowflakes in the case any of the snowflakes that we hang were to burn out or go out, and those are an estimated, let's say, $500 to $600 apiece. So, that's where you got to $25,000.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Anything further on holiday lighting expansion?
Mr. ...
I want to note that I skipped a row, and that Chamber of Commerce website update is something I skipped over for after dinner, but...
If I could just clarify, I am interested in, in designing holiday lighting throughout the city of Lakewood, but that would be something that I would hope that we could discuss in our, our normal budget hearings because this would be ongoing, not something that would be completed within a year, but, you know, maybe a five-year master plan that I'll work with the administration on, and, you know, we'll kind of move forward with that, because the same thing would have to be done on other poles throughout the city. Director Gordon would have to look at those to see if they can accommodate holiday lighting. I'd love to see snowflakes up and down all the streets in Lakewood, but what the cost would be, and, and I think this is a great way to start in a, in a limited area, to see what the install costs are, how, how much it's going to cost to actually pay for the electricity for these lights, and then we could move forward on the whole city and include that in our budget plans moving forward.
Fair enough. You know, Lakewood's blessing and its curse is having two major thoroughfares solely for commercial use, essentially. So, we're, we're taking one of two major bites of the apple here, I think. Director Gordon.
One thing I would, I would definitely take into consideration is that Detroit, we, we did do a study of all the poles on Detroit, so this would cover all of the poles that we are able to do on Detroit, just so everybody's on the same page here. There are certain stipulations with poles. We have looked into Madison as best we can, not as thoroughly as we have Detroit, but just to keep that in mind moving forward, that there are certain stipulations with hanging Christmas displays or holiday displays, excuse me, in regards to using utility poles.
Well, and I just want to acknowledge the detail of which, that we could be in this committee meeting and, and you could speak to individual poles in Lakewood for snowflakes, is we're not doing too badly here in terms of being thorough. I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll just bump it up to 25 so the whole amount...
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw in $5,000.
Even better. There you go.
Especially because of that westward inclination towards Ward One. Understood. Okay, with that, we're going to break here briefly just to, to eat dinner. We'll take about 15 to 20 minutes in total to do so. Hoping we can all recess to the council conference room and, and go from there and reconvene in about 20 minutes. So, let's say 8:06. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Vice President Keppel.
One of the ideas that Ms. Mall talked about with their website was connected to the delivery app concept that I've been talking about, and I did tell her that I'd be interested in talking about that further. The $25,000, I think, would be insufficient to do that concept. It would potentially do a, you know, do a very nice, regular website, but I think I'd rather wait and have a fuller conversation with her about fleshing that out of what it could really do to serve the community.
Okay. Is that a suggestion that we table this discussion?
Indeed.
Okay. Any further comments from my colleagues? With apologies for skipping over this one initially. We'll move on to expansion of Lakewood Park concessions.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
I think it's okay to table this one. I'm in conversation with the vendor who now may be saying that they don't think they can support operations at least this year, and the whole concept was to provide equipment to support the operations, but they're, I guess, studying that further. So, I think it's okay to table this for the moment.
Okay. I have lots of questions on that, but perhaps that's a discussion for another night outside of ARPA discussions here this evening. With that, I know on this item, Vice President Keppel, you sought to remove yourself from the discussion entirely, so I guess it's your turn to get seconds for dinner, if you like. Okay. We're gonna move on to the library accessibility expansion proposal. Any comment, question, offerings, et cetera?
Yeah, I'd like to make a kind of initial salvo here, and for the reasons I stated before, libraries weren't, they were inside part of the community and they were not included with this, in this ARPA package. Neither were schools, but this is the only proposal that relates to other government entities, so I do feel like, and it's for very good reason, expanding accessibility, and I thought they made a compelling proposal. So I would like to dedicate $41,667 to that, so, because I have an out amount, so.
That is an incredibly specific amount, and now we lack our scribe to, you got this. Pressure's on you. Yes, yeah. I don't know, but you're about to type it in for Councilman Marks. Oh, man. I don't think, I think the number lock is off. You're going to do that again? Yeah. I explained when she said she had to leave how we were going to lose so much more than just this discussion. All right. Any further offerings or questions or?
Sure, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
I'd be happy to support this for a portion. You know, I don't know, I'd be happy to split the remaining amount with other council members if they're interested, but for round numbers, how about at least $19,166, since I've also got an out amount?
All right. Anyone, anything else at this time, acknowledging that we may kind of run through these?
Mr. President.
Councilmember Marks.
Thanks. I'd like to contribute $10,000 to the library.
Way easier number to type. Anyone, anything else? Very. One might argue someone who is still present and hasn't given should contribute something. Are we out? All right, whatever the difference is. Okay. Is that what you meant? This really makes for good television, I'm sure. Okay. The remainder being still a weird amount, I'll pay whatever the difference is and we can move on. Or you can erase the whole thing. It's an option. Don't give anything to her. Robert's rules have gone out the window entirely at this point. Bingo. Okay. Thank you for running point. Any further discussion on the library? Vice President Keppel, if you can hear us, you're free to return at your earliest convenience. I note that related to the equipment storage piece, I think otherwise that discussion's tabled, Councilman Bullock, because that relates to the Madison Park?
Yes, I think that the intent is that that is fully funded with that allocation, and that's going to have to be an ongoing informal conversation with the administration. But I stand corrected if Director Gordon or Director Leinenger have any, anything to add?
Yes, we, this will be considered within our Madison Park master plan.
Very good. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to move right back up to the top to see if council members have anything to consider. Even though we were tabling the discussion of the former youth building, youth services building, I did want to reserve the right for council members to allocate funds towards this, or at least table them for the time being pending a further decision on this property, a further formalized decision on this property. Anything from anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Keppel.
Just thinking in terms of process, so we're probably not going to get through, maybe we will, but making another pass here, if we have ones that we want to finalize in terms of doing a resolution for our next full council meeting, or do we want to wait and have, I think it would be May 8th would be our next potential committee of the whole, but I'd have to check with the clerk, so.
So unless there's some timing-related issue with any one of these potentially funded entities, I would prefer to just wait, in terms of actual allocation and a resolution related to our ARPA funds as a council.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
On the holiday lighting one, there could be, since there's a timing issue, stipulate for the sake of argument that we have a decision to move forward, there's a kind of a work-time delay factor to plan for.
So that's actually, that probably points to an important clarification to make as a whole, that we hopefully don't have to make a whole lot of, but related to your point, Director Rankitour, perhaps you can inform me, can we choose to allocate funding to something now but choose the bucket later?
Yes, I think that's pretty much what we've done with all the administrations.
Okay. Okay, great. With a good faith, acknowledging that we would intend to, you know, fund certain projects like the, like the snowflakes, et cetera, using these ARPA ad hoc revenue replacement dollars. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. With that, again, back to the former youth services building and allocating funding towards that project moving forward, or was there still a process question even related to timing of our approval of that recommendation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, the, I don't want to jump, is it okay?
It's fine.
First of all, I appreciate your approach here, that we've got some more discussion to do and reserving for the moment an allocation that could be used in some manner. Secondly, depending on how this settles, you know, it's possible that funds other than ARPA get used, or funds other than ARPA in this amount get used. And I guess I'd like to have a more detailed discussion to understand if my scenario is actually a possibility. You know, it's kind of analogous to what we were discussing with the Studio Westman Seventeenth request and potential funding priority, where there could be other funds in other forms that could help just as much or more for property transfers. So I do know that the, both applicants asked for ARPA cash, and I think there's good reasons why they did, but I guess I'd like to have a little bit more of an expert conversation underneath all of that before, for sure, saying $200,000 is the right amount, maybe it's high, maybe it's low, whatever. But I agree with your suggestion tonight, that, you know, we take the approach of reserving that amount for now.
Yeah. Well, and truthfully, it's Vice President Keppel's suggestion, and I think it was a rightful one. And, you know, it's in the interest of just making sure that we don't miss anybody in this that, you know, is entitled these funds. I do, I suppose, have a question for the administration semi-related to all this, and that is that if there is a, you know, if we allocate, you know, $100,000 to the youth services building, but then there is a easier, more accessible funding stream that could pay for that down the road in the next year or so, could that, or would that mean that that $100,000 becomes available to council again to distribute it in another way? Maybe not a fair question to propose on the fly. I just, you know, there may be a grant out there or some other funding stream.
Good evening, once again. So it's probably unlikely that there would be something that come available in the future.
I figure.
Anything that we would have to do would have to be in the short term, whether it's through the transfer itself, or however we do, however we think about, however we think about the transfer of property.
Okay. Very good. And then with that, are there any other additional set-asides that any council members, individual council members would like to make towards the former youth services building? Hearing none, and acknowledging that that project costs for the Lakewood Community Services Center is $250,000. Just wanted to keep that in the back of our minds. We will move on to the next, I suppose, unfunded, or not completely funded or potentially funded endeavor, and that's Lakewood Alive Housing Outreach. Maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves to discuss this any further as well. Am I?
Actually, Mr. Chair, yeah, I would like to dedicate the rest of the $20,000 I have left. I know that's over. However, if it's a hold, you know, there are other, there may be other uses for that, and if they have the ability to, for instance, procure an electric vehicle, you know, it'll be a little bit extra, so I think that makes sense to make them hold there. And if that's just, if this is still a conversation we want to keep a pin in and come back to next year, then you can hold that $20,000 of mine in that bucket. That's what, and actually, I would almost like to hear from Lakewood Alive again, too, since we're not going to, it sounds like we're not going to be, if this is the, or there's a potential that we wouldn't be giving them any money to renovate a potential space. If that's the case, I would like to hear again from them and figure out what's most important, so we can prioritize that. But that could be a later date, I just want to say. I'll set aside the rest of my funds for whatever that ends up being.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's generous. Next, moving on to, I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I could interject.
Please.
Something I should have brought up earlier when we were talking about Lakewood Alive and the housing outreach dollars. So when we think about putting money towards programming, the city already provides a significant amount of money towards Lakewood Alive and their programming, their operations. I think one of the things that we have to do, recognizing this is kind of where the dollars are being allocated, is we need to look at the overall operational budget that they have and make sure that they have capacity to, we're not overpaying for the work. And so that's something we'll have to go and rectify. I know there's some equipment purchases mixed into this. We can spread this across three years, but we're talking about dollar numbers of significant size, that we just need to make sure that they have the resources to actually carry out this amount of work over that amount of time.
Right, and I think we haven't, even though the line item says housing outreach, I don't know that we've really drilled down on what this funding would be toward. I think we acknowledge that if in fact Lakewood Alive is not the ultimate tenant or owner of the Lakewood former youth services building, that this funding could go toward a permanent house, a permanent place for Lakewood Alive instead, which would be very much one-time funds and for the purposes that ARPA would seek.
And we do have other properties, too, that might be accessible.
Don't we know it? And I hope that all works out, of course.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Good discussion, and the council vice president is calling up on screen the detail for that particular item. This is the total budget, and if you, I think if we scroll down, the 115, maybe they don't, but, so the, so what the proposed, the proposal in the application is what's being highlighted on screen. So some of these are, okay, and there's another document, but for example, some of it is equipment for accessible bathrooms, like grab bars, and the testimony we received was that those are relatively modest in cost, but for various reasons, not many funders fund that. So for about $20,000, there could be some equipment that for a year plus could marry up to the services. So I am optimistic that the proposal, you know, meets the factors that the planning director discussed, but I agree with others, I can't remember now, who have been saying, you know, let's circle back around and have a more detailed conversation with the organization to inform whatever kind of decision comes out.
Right. And, you know, as it stands in this line item, we've now allocated more than they're asking for. So I think we're on the right track. And if those funds are not ultimately needed by Lakewood Alive, which I doubt, we can have further discussion about allocating them otherwise. So with that, we'll move on to the enhanced traffic calming proposal, one which I am biased about, but also which I think speeds up our traffic calming in Lakewood to a point where all of our most problem-filled streets are in some way or another touched by traffic calming measures in the city of Lakewood. Any additional funds that my colleagues would like to allocate towards this cost?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
I'm open to it. I did want to ask, can all of these be spent? And maybe I need to just be reminded, but my impression is that we've done a lot of good due diligence in the traffic calming program, and many times the streets applying or going through the process end up getting designated as not needing speed tables, et cetera, right? So the question, one for me, would be, could somebody refresh my memory, maybe the intent was that we would buy in advance a year and a half or two years' worth of equipment in anticipation that it would be used? Is that the concept?
This would cover solar-powered speed notification signs on many streets. It would cover speed tables on many streets. It would only do so along the lines of the already established program for delineating which streets would get such things. It would simply speed up the process of when they would get them. I mean, I'll use a personal example of having simply offered up to planning a list of streets in Ward Three that I thought needed this, and they put that through the gauntlet of what was already in process, what the data dictated didn't need traffic calming, where there was already an effort amongst the citizens of a street, the residents of a street, and other factors that ultimately churned out, you know, maybe a third or so less streets than what I was suggesting that needed such measures. So it really takes a program that I think already is in existence and might come to fruition in several years and makes it happen quicker in an area or an issue of the city for which I, as a Ward Council person, probably get the most number of calls about. And I think Councilman Baker would acknowledge the same.
Yeah, if I could call myself, I would and report it. But to the chair's point, it's also to Councilman Bullock that, so the program requires this kind of democratic process to get the speed tables. Most of these funds are for the speedometer device, which allows you to collect data and doesn't require a democratic process to put on a street. So if there's kind of a spot issue, the planning department can go out and put that up on a street to then kind of notify people they're going too fast and then also collect data. So it's a really kind of useful and nimble tool that we're helping kind of supplement what the planning department already does to kind of do it better.
And I should add, just because I know Chief Storey brought it up once, just the idea of pre-purchasing a seven-year data plan, for instance, and that applicability to ARPA guidelines, and so if, to the extent a revenue replacement could help with some of that, you know, I would hope that would be the case. But I appreciate the question, nonetheless, I don't want to be outside of the guidelines there. Anything else? Anyone else? Vice President Keppel?
Thank you. I think I started to ask this question before, and I don't know, this is Director Coletta, I hate to put you on the spot, but the data for these, are we, do we have to use that particular company's software with the equipment that would be purchased, or are we able to use other software? Because I remember that being a significant part of the cost, the data and the?
Are you referring to the data plan?
Yeah, I thought, because it was tied to collecting from those, is that, that it was a specific, that would be cloud There would be cloud storage of the data that's collected from them that we're paying with that specific company?
Yeah. You have to use their service.
You have to use that specific one?
Yeah. If you choose not to pay the subscription, then you're forced to download the data that's collected in, you know, with Bluetooth on a laptop. So it's super inconvenient, and you lose visibility to when the signs go offline.
Okay. Thank you.
And I should add that that is a substantial portion of the ultimate cost, because we wanted to build in as many years as possible of the data. And to be truthful, I'm not sure of the exact usable life of one of these devices ultimately, and it may be seven years anyway. And, you know, so once we've finished out our data plan, the usable life of that device has also run its course. Well, I suppose I'll allocate another 12, 155 of my funds, just to leave me at an even 50 remaining. So that would actually make you at 62, 155. 62. No. Because I already had 50 there, so it'll leave me at 50 bottom line. So hit Enter and... Yeah. Perfect. All right. I'm not sensing any ground swell otherwise beyond... I will let you. All right.
You can add the delta to mine.
You just did that. Okay.
Council President. I beat you.
It's my understanding there would be no math. All right. So we're good with traffic calming. We'll move back to Studio West One Seventeen and any further allocations my colleagues would like to make, at least at this time. Actually, you know, to say it another way, colleagues, is there anything remaining between Lines Six through 21, but really 13, or Seven through 13, that any of you would like to allocate anything to? Perhaps that's a better way of putting it at this stage. Councilman Bullock.
Mr. Chair, yes, but I don't know the answer just yet. I'd like to be supportive to both Studio West One Seventeenth and to the Chamber of Commerce in some form, but I guess I'd benefit from having a little bit more engaged and informed dialogue with both applicants, you know, to make a thoughtful decision there. So happy to work with Councilwoman Keppel on some of the communication with the Chamber.
All right. Any other colleagues have allocations they'd like to make at this time?
So I'd put point of order, and I think we've talked about it a little bit. So the idea would be that we would come together with a large communication, but we're going to have another committee of the whole meeting to...
Correct.
Where they refine these.
Correct. I would suspect May 8th, we will have a committee of the whole meeting to... Finalize is a strong word, but come close to finalizing this. Whose birthday? We'll make the whole spreadsheet orange that day. All right. Anyone, any other allocations they'd like to make for this evening? Okay. Any questions, comments, procedural or otherwise, or concerns from the administration? Okay. We're in a position I didn't expect to be in, but that's okay. That's all right. So what I would encourage my colleagues to do, I'm not sure if May 8th will have full-scale presentations for many of these entities requesting. They've already done that for us. We also have the ability to make requests or questions to any of those entities on our own. We have all of their applications. We have all their contact information, things like that. We're also dealing primarily with our own individual funds to give, so I think it's up to each individual council member to ask within, and then ask questions to the entities involved, and then come in on May 8th with some decisions on how you would each individually like to allocate funds, in the hopes that we could have most or all of this wrapped up by the end of our committee of the whole meeting on May 8th. Vice President Keppel.
Thank you. Will we have a official communication regarding the recommendation for the youth building at the upcoming May 1st, I think?
That's a good question.
I don't see how we would have anything on the May 1st agenda regarding youth. So the process right now is we're working to draft a purchase agreement that then we'll share with LCSC for them to review. Once they've had a chance to review it, and we probably have traded a couple of times, we'll then put that into legislation that will forward to city councils as that process. That would have to be done here by Wednesday to hit your packet, and we're still drafting the purchase agreement. So I'd say the soonest would be May 15th, and that's hopefully we're seeing eye to eye on the purchase agreement. It'll be the first time you see legislation.
Okay. So maybe after our next meeting that we'll... Okay. But nonetheless, we've obviously carved out some funds for this purpose anyway, and we're...
And you see the direction that the recommendation's going, so you at least have that information to move forward with.
Right. And I think, you know, as major pitfalls or hurdles come about, we would be notified of those, and we can work accordingly. Okay. Fair enough. You know, not everything's going to fit perfectly into a timeline. In fact, none of it does, really. Councilman Bullock.
So first of all, thanks to you and the council vice president for the process, and to Mayor George and her team for working kind of patiently and diligently through all this. I found this to be a very fruitful dialogue, even if some of these proposals don't get funded or don't get fully funded, it's a good deliberation, and I think will bear fruit over time. On the matter of the building and also the two nonprofits who applied for the youth building and a potential ARPA allocation or other funding allocation to help retrofit the building to be ready to move in, I'd invite some discussion prior to the next time we meet, whenever those dates are, to try to position city council to be able to do the utmost to help both organizations be successful. And that's a pretty broad statement, but I think there could be some options where we could do that. It'll require some dialogue. But in other words, I think, you know, maybe if one or more council members were to work with the administration on an informal basis and then be in a position to propose some options that we haven't yet considered, that would be helpful. And then the second point is, yes, I will come for the May 8th, ready to finish my allocation, and thanks for your patience on all of this.
No. I mean, I think it's all in the interest of council members having their questions answered and understanding everything we can about, which is not a small amount of funding to distribute for the betterment of our community. Any further comments, colleagues? Hearing none. I'll move to approve the minutes of our most previous meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. I usually have the date lined up, and I didn't, so most previous is what we had to go on. Any further comments for the good of the cause? Councilwoman Marks?
Yes, I just would like to remind everybody that Saturday is Keep Lakewood Beautiful, cleanup at Madison Park. I hope to see all my colleagues there with your picks and shovels and rakes and brooms.
All right. And all in preparation for a potential master plan, of course, for said park. Anything else? Hearing none. Move to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We are adjourned.